To this regular meeting of council, the Corporation of the Municipality of Central Elgin held today, Monday, March 13th. Before we rise for the National Anthem, I would like to take a moment and speak briefly on the passing of Dunk McPhail. His worship Dunk McPhail was a three-time warden. He was the sitting deputy warden. He was a member who sat in this room at this table. And although I only knew him for, since the start of my term, I learned from Mayor McPhail. I enjoyed the time I spent with him and his wife, Norma, at Roma, as did the deputy mayor and other councillors. I was looking forward to working with him, but that is not to be. To Norma and the McPhail family, you're obviously in our thoughts. We respect all that Dunk has accomplished, but can't know the personal loss and sadness you and your family face. I would like to say on behalf of Central Elgin and the residents, rest eternal your worship, and may light perpetual shine upon you. And I would ask council, as we rise for the National Anthem, if we could take a moment of silence to honor the life of his worship Dunk McPhail. The municipality of Central Elgin acknowledges that it is located on the land of the Makit Treaty that was signed by the Wahandad and Anishavi nations, including and its sisters of the Chipawas, the Thames First Nation. It is also the traditional territory of the Hodenasie, Adewandronk, and Mississauga nation. These first nations continue to provide ongoing stewardship of the land and waters in the municipalities of Central Elgin. May I ask if anyone has a disclosure of peculiar interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none, if I could get a mover and a seconder for the adoption of the previous minutes. Deputy Mayor Noble and councillor Bachman.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by councillor Bachman, that the minutes of the special meeting of council dated February 22nd, 2023, and regular meeting of council dated Monday, February 27th, 2023, be adopted.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? opposed? Carried.
My apologies, Mayor Sloan. If I could interject, if, as long as councillor Graham is visible, then you can just do a show of hands. We don't need to do recorded votes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Okay, thank you councillor Graham, welcome. And we now have, I believe, a, are going to move forward with a delegation. And it's Sandra Hayman, who's an engineering associate, manager of civil engineering with the IBI Group. Sandra, can you hear me? And we look forward to your presentation.
I can hear you.
Sandra, I think you're muted.
Yeah, I think I'm unmuted now. Hello?
Yes, you are. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I will share my screen. Okay. So everybody can see that, okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so I'm Sandra Hayman. I'm the project manager for this project, and I'm an engineer working in the consulting engineering sector. I've been there for about 37 years, working in primarily the municipal engineering and land development areas. And the last 20 years, I've been at IBI Group. So I'll go through this presentation, which is basically some background and outlining the issues and so forth. And then I can answer some questions at the end if anybody wishes. So the area we're looking at here is Front Street, which is at the top of the bluffs here, west of Kettle Creek. And it's approximately 600 meters in length at the top of the bluff. And there's only one point of access up and down Front Street from George Street at this point here. And over the years, this bluff slope has been experiencing erosion and movements which are encroaching towards Front Street and may compromise its integrity. Some background information. Currently, there are some sections along Front Street which have steel gravity bin-type walls. There's about 250 meters worth of walls in two separate sections. This 250 meters total out of 600 meters. And the existing ones were installed in the 1970s and 1980s to stabilize portions of the top of the slope and to protect the sleep, the, sorry, the street. And they seem to have performed fairly successfully over the years. But in between these existing bin-type walls, there are sections that are not protected with walls, and these areas are continuing to show signs of erosion and movement along there. So over the years, there's been a few geotechnical reports completed to date by Goldar Associates. In 2018, there was a geotechnical exploration which provided a slope stability assessment. And in that report, they had some recommendations for remedial measures to assist in this slopes, to stabilize the slope. And one recommendation was to construct these, more of these gravity-type bin walls, similar to those existing walls that I just showed. And the second recommendation was that drainage was to be directed away from the slope. And this would help to mitigate the saturation of soils within the slope itself and help to prevent further movements. And last month, there was a further reassessment completed, and Goldar Associates has determined that the slope is marginally stable to unstable, and with some sections continuing to recede towards Front Street. And they've noted that recession will continue until the seepage is controlled and remedial works are constructed. The one thing that we cannot do is predict the rate of recession because it's dependent upon so many unpredictable factors, such as the slope geometry, soil and groundwater conditions, duration and magnitude of rainfall events, spring melt conditions, and some other environmental conditions. And in this report last month, they updated their figure here. There's a Front Street running along here. This is a portion of Front Street. These two dark black lines at either side are existing bin walls. And in the middle portion, there's a section without these bin walls. They're currently bare right now. There's no reinforcement in there. So at the bottom of the slope, they know that there's some leaning trees. And leaning trees tend to, well, as you know, the trees tend to grow straight up and down. But if there are leaning trees, that tends to indicate there's some type of slope instability happening or slope shifting. There are a couple of spots of cut vegetation that seems to have been undertaken over the years. Vegetation takes, tends to take up the water in the soil, and the roots help stabilize the soil. So cut vegetation doesn't help to, when it's missing. It tends to destabilize the slope. And in addition, up at the top, there are a few failure areas. There's a, there's a few pictures I'll go through to show these here, but they've noted three such failures along here. In this case here, the picture on the left was taken in September of 2021, and the one on the right was taken just last month. And it indicates there's some further slumping and deformation at the top of the slope here. This picture here is quite indicative of what is happening. This picture was taken in 2017. There's an existing tree here, which you could see is at quite an angle. It obviously would have grown straight up, but at some point in the past, we understand it was in about 2019, a portion of this slope slipped downwards, took this tree along with it, and as a result, it's now just leaning. Quite an indication that movement has occurred. At the top of the slope, there's this cut stump here, which is, it's still on the ground, attached to the top of the bluff, but overhanging. And then you can see last month, this picture shows this stump further down the slope. So this has, in those years, at some point has, there's been some undercutting of the ground, and this has fallen and shifted down the slope as well. These are a couple more pictures of that same stump. And since 2021, it's remained in relatively the same position on the slope face, but the slope geometry is starting to show some changes along it as well. And this is another photo along the slope of one particular location where there's some active erosion, 2021 and last month and 2023. And in particular, you can see there's a bit of a line here between dark and light soil. It's indicating that there is some water seeping out of the bluff slope, and that water seepage is taking along, taking out with it some of the fine-grained soils. So it's starting, it's seeping out and carrying some fine-grained soils with it. So it's slowly eating away at the slope, undercutting all this, the top soil and the roots and vegetation on top. Eventually, all this, this soil will be undercutting this mass on top. This will become too heavy. This will fall down and slump down the slope, similar to the other picture there. So it's just an indication of some act of the erosion that's happening. Along with the slope conditions, the pavement conditions along Front Street have been monitored as well, and the pavements are in variable condition. There are some areas of severe alligator cracking and rutting over the existing underground services. And there's several areas of patchwork that have been completed throughout the years. There's no evidence of tension cracking or new deformations when we compare to 2017. However, changes can occur any time. The big changes are happening just outside of this roadway on the bluff slope itself. And I might point out that the roadway, it does have a water main along the north side and an existing sanitary sewer near the center of the road. So as well as the road being in jeopardy, there's a chance that those municipal services could also be in jeopardy in the future. If there's a slope, a shift in the slope, they could be, the water main could break or the sewer pipes could break and no longer function as they should. The red line, I'll get to this later, but the red line is basically showing the approximate property line at the end of this walkway here. That's the edge of the municipal right-of-way and private property behind it. At the slope edge, it varies, but generally, it's just beyond the top of slope there is the right-of-way line as well. A few more pictures of the roadway. You can see some cracking along here in some patchwork. Same picture, not a lot of change, but indications that there has been movement in the past. And here as well, this is the alligator cracking, showing this, the slope is shifting, and there's some tension in the asphalt, which shows up as the asphalt cracking in locations. So to date, in 2021, sorry, in 2020, we completed a Schedule B environmental assessment, or an EA. And during that EA, there were alternatives assessed to help us determine an appropriate storm outlet to drain the slope. And this storm outlet would aid in the stabilization by draining the water from the top of the slope, getting it down to the bottom without saturating the slope itself and creating those erosion issues that I had outlined earlier. And as part of this EA process, there were archaeological investigations, cultural heritage and natural heritage studies, and as I noted before, the geotechnical investigations. These were all completed to determine impacts on all of these alternatives that we were looking at. And in the end, the alternative with the least overall impact was recommended. And then ultimately, in, I believe it was late 2020 or early 2021, this EA was accepted by the Ministry of the Environment, and this gave the, basically the go-ahead for the preferred option to proceed onwards onto detailed design. So we, at that point, proceeded into the detailed design portion, and that was completed late last year, and then the project was tendered in December. This is a little harder to see, but basically from the EA, there were a number of alternatives we had recommended. In the areas in red, two locations are the existing bin walls, and the recommendation was to put storm sewer along the top of Front Street. Currently, there is no storm sewer, and the water just sheds off of the roadway to multiple locations, and most of them are just directed off of the slope itself. So that's really exacerbating the saturation of the soil within the bluff itself. So the idea was to pick up the storm sewer along Front Street, and then the idea is to directionally drill down the slope to an infiltration gallery within Stanley Park. And this appeared to be the best alternative of all the, there were four or five alternatives looked at, and this seemed to be the most, the easiest to maintain, the most, the least costly alternative, had the less, the least impact on the natural environment, archaeological, and so forth. So there were a number of assess, you know, assessments done for each of the alternatives, and this one came out in the end. And this was the alternative that was designed and tendered last year. Excuse me. So this is a typical cross-section that is designed along Front Street. So this, this is the existing ground from going from the private properties onto, this is Front Street itself, and then the bluff slope down here. So we've got the bin walls being constructed at the top of the bluff slope. And yes, there's quite a large, in this red area, there's quite a large area that needs to be excavated and material removed for the bin wall construction. And then there's material to be replaced within the bin walls. That's free draining. And in addition to the bin wall itself, we've got the storm sewer to be constructed along Front Street to pick up all the drainage from the road, as well as the subdrain behind the bin wall itself. Now, I mentioned, I pointed out the property line within the street before. I'll just flip back. As you can see, there's not a lot of room to construct all these works. It's a very narrow, very difficult area to construct such an extensive amount of work, and some specialized construction will be needed. For instance, the storm sewer, if we were to just go in with a backhoe and dig up, dig to get the storm sewer installed, a minimum excavation would be this dotted line here, and there's not any room to get equipment by and so forth. So you'd probably have to go to a trench box type installation, such as this one in the bottom right, where there's essentially steel walls on either side of the excavation. The storm sewer is installed, equipment can run back and forth on the side, and the backhoe can be, can be situated behind, behind the construction. So that's one component, and that's just for the storm sewer itself. And as I mentioned before, Front Street has only one point of access going up and down. In addition to this, we had to look at actually staging the construction and giving the residents other parking areas to park at and other routes to get up to the roadway during construction as well. As for the bin wall itself, these are examples of a bin wall, just to give you an idea of what is proposed. These bottom two photos, you can see there's quite a large excavation required. Then these steel bins are basically installed. And as you can see, there's a backhoe here, filling these bins with free draining granular materials, so water can flow through fairly easily, be picked up by a drainage pipe system. So here, and this photo here shows a roadway being constructed on top of the bin wall, following the backfilling in behind. So there's fair, a fair amount of excavation needed, equipment. In addition, there's, the contractor will need stockpiles for his granular material. He'll need to have trucks coming in and out to take the excavated material away. So it's a fairly extensive project undertake. I just wanted to address the escalating costs that have happened throughout the years. In 2020, for the environmental assessment, we had an estimated construction cost of about 3.3 million. And these EA cost estimates are very preliminary, and they're performed with very little to no detailed design, and the contingency at this point would generally be about 25 to 30%. In 2022, we did a pre-tendered construction cost estimate, about 4.6 million, which is almost 40% more than that. During the detailed design, there were, there were a lot of, a lot more constraints identified. During the EA, there was no topographic survey, so that was undertaken during the detailed design. The better location of the underground water main and sanitary, so there were conflicts there, trying to situate new storm sewer in there and so forth. All of this led to more difficult construction practices that were required to, in order to construct this work. And I might point out that the construction price index for the third quarter of 2022, it's recorded at about almost 25% more than compared to the second quarter of 2020. And it's also difficult to estimate costs, construction costs due to risks and liabilities, local contractor availability and labor. This type of project is not built very often, so there's not a lot of existing data to go by. So we do the best estimate we can, we can, by talking, actually talking with other contractors or having some, something comparable to look at. So it was, it was estimated at 4.6 million at that point, just before tender. That was the end of last year. Then it actually went to tender in December, and the tendered cost came in at 5.1 million, an increase of about 10 or 11% from the actual cost estimate. We believe that there's going to be a continuation of this, of this trend, but it's really an unknown into the future. I mean, I've been in this industry for 37 years or so. There's been little blips here and there, but all in all, over the, over the years, costs always tend to go up. And actually, this trend, it's been a common occurrence with many other regions, projects in the regions. We've come across 30 to 50% price increases from estimates. There was even one project that came in double, double the amount. So the last few years have been fairly volatile in that, in that regard. Now, the construction cost increases, they're recorded about 12 and a half percent higher in the last 12 months, according to Statistics Canada. And many reasons are attributed to this. One is there are labor shortages, and they have resulted in increased costs for skilled labor. Larger contractors that are capable of doing this work, they're traditionally unionized, bound, union agreements, bargaining. Also, there's been increased insurance rates felt throughout the industry due to increased project scopes and risk. The other new item that has come, there's been a recent change made to provincial legislation regarding the management of excess soils. And as of January 1st, 2023, this regulation became fully effective, and it requires that there's more testing of materials, tracking of material, reporting, and during disposal and excavation of the site. So the contractor has a lot more bookkeeping and tracking during construction. That is very new, and the costs are not yet fully known or predictable, and contractors are still working through that. So that was a huge unknown at the time of tendering as well. um, that was a huge unknown at the uh time tendering as well. Uh, as many, no fuel, especially diesel, that's been his, has been historically high, adding to the transportation and equipment charges and material costs. Some items such as steel and concrete have seen very high increases in the last couple of years. And some of like, some of these items are starting to stabilize, uh, but the future is unknown. There has, there's, really hasn't opened real trend. Um, but all in all, it's, it's difficult to predict the future trend, but the factors I have noted indicate that it won't become any less expensive. Uh, just a brief summary, um, all in all, it's, it's really a very difficult and expensive project to construct. Um, there's a lot of liability on the contractor's part himself, they're constructing on top of large bluff, hose, houses in close proximity and unstable slope on the other side. Um, and the conditions of the slope are not getting any better, any better. It's unknown when failures will occur, but they will ultimately occur, and the results could be catastrophic. Um, I would, I would um suggest that there's a fair liability to the municipality. There's an unstable slope affecting the existing road, potentially the underground services such as the sanitary water and hydro. Uh, and failure can affect access to the residents, including emergency services, garbage collection, maintenance. Uh, as well, and uh and uh I might, I might note there were also some failures noted at the bottom of the slope, and there's, there is material going downhill, which is affecting some of these private lots at the bottom. Um, I would, I would suggest that the remedial measures really should be constructed as soon as possible to control the slope and help prevent further liabilities wherever possible. Um, that's the end of my present, presentation.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Sandra. That's very thorough, very informative. I'd like to open it up down to any counselors that might have questions, please. Counselor Halpin, please.
Thank you, uh, through you, Mayor Sloan. Um, I'm not sure, Sandra, if this question is better directed to you or to our staff. But um, looking at the issue of liabilities, uh, you mentioned, and I saw in some of the reports as well, several times mentioned the possibility of damage to uh, water and sewage lines, and that is something that um staff and members of council from municipalities have individual liability for as well. Is that something where if we were to have failure here, that liability would apply to that case? Do you know that?
Uh, I am not a lawyer, um, but I would think that there would be some sort of liability, just because the municipality has been studying this uh slope for many years and knows that there is an issue there.
Thank you. Okay, counselor, oh, Mr. Perrin, sorry. There's one here.
With respect to the, the failures of those infrastructure, is that um, that water main along Front Street, I believe, is a hundred or two hundred millimeter, one fifty millimeter diameter? Two hundred millimeters, so eight inches of water. So when an eight inch water main lets go, that's a lot of water in a very short period of time. By the time we would be able to react and get there, Front Street would be totally gone. Because you have an open channel right out to the bluff, and you'd have potential pro- or liability with failed basements uh given that the houses are so close uh to the, the north side of Front Street, even on a sanitary sewer, which would go first potentially. Um, by the time that we were aware of that, we could end up with further uh erosion of Front Street and the, uh, and the road uh totally uh washed out. In the asset uh management plan that was adopted by council in, in uh in twenty twenty-two, uh, it was identified that there was only two real exposures to the municipality with respect to your road system and uh with respect to the consequence of failure. And those two road segments uh were identified as Barnham's Gully Line uh to the east uh of Port Stanley. Uh, the remedy to that is that we just close the road because we have access from each end. The biggest consequence of failure is Front Street because there's approximately seventy-eight homes that gain access to Front Street with no secondary access. So the area that uh Ms. Hammond identified with the big scarf uh and, and failure, when you see those pictures, that was at the intersection of the east leg of Tower Heights, pretty much at the most easily end of the street. So if that goes, all the properties to the west will lose access. Uh, they will not be afforded uh vehicular access, and it'll be difficult for emergency services and service vehicles to access those properties.
Thank you, Mr. Perrin. Uh, Counselor Bachman, please.
Uh, just for reference sake, uh, Mr. Brooks, how long have we been studying this Front Street issue, like from its uh conception?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Bachman. Uh, the earliest studies that uh we have record of were undertaken by the village of Port Stanley and began in the early seventies.
Thank you. Question for, I'm not sure who it is, the current bin walls that are there. How long have they been in place, please?
Uh, they've been there forty to fifty years.
Okay, sa- is it, oh, that, that was from um um, Sandra, sorry, Sandra. And do they have a life, they, what's their, what's their maximum life? Is it fifty years? Is that why this is up?
Um, I, I believe they're designed for about seventy-five years. Um, I mean, that's the optimal design life, and generally, they would tend to have life beyond that, but that's the optimal design life.
Seventy-five years. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Sorry, pardon me, Mr. Brooks.
It, it should be noted that we aren't replacing the existing bin walls that were installed in the seventies and eighties. Uh, we're adding to those bin walls that are already in place.
Okay, thank you. Understood. Counselor Watson, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, how long ago was that water line put in there to the staff? That I'm just wondering if it is gonna fail anytime soon.
Mr. Brooks?
Uh, the, I believe the water main that was installed up there is approximately twenty years old. But we'll get a
That shouldn't be too bad. I got a few more questions then, too. Uh, those gravity bins that are in there now, are they hooked up to some kind of drainage now as well?
There are, there is some drainage hooked up to those um bin walls that are directed uh down the slope. Part of this project will clean up some of the drainage uh that is connected to the, those bin walls. Uh, because some of that drainage is contributing to some of the slope erosion as well.
Okay, uh, if I can keep going here, uh, have we ever looked into uh another route for those, some of those uh um, people that live up there to get down? Is there any other way we can get them up and down from there if there is a catastrophe?
Mr. Perrin, did you want to comment? You're shaking your head.
Buy something and um just have a contingency plan in place in case everything goes bad there. Okay. Thanks.
Um, Mr. Perrin, sorry, there. Sorry, Mr. Perrin, could you turn your mic on? Oh, sorry, it doesn't work. They're just, I just. Sure, would you like to move over here, guys? So we could hear from you, because I don't think the people that uh, that are online can hear it, because I just got a text from Counselor Graham.
My apologies. Uh, so the uh water main, uh, through you, uh, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Watson. Uh, the, the water main on Front Street was constructed nineteen ninety. It's a PVC water main, but uh just to, to clarify that if there is a slope failure, the slope is what's supporting the water main. So it, it's not really a concern that the water main is gonna break because it's cast iron or something like that. It's that if there is a slope failure, that will undermine the water main, cause it to rupture, and then we have a much larger issue to deal with.
Thank you. Anything further, Counselor Watson? Okay, thank you. Counselors? Any other comments? Pardon me, Counselor Watson.
I wrote down earlier, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, uh, is there any way to I know it's a little bit too late, they say you should plant a tree twenty years ago, but any tree planting or uh any veget- vegetation we can put there to help out at all, like uh hydro seeding or anything for a uh, I'll give us a little bit more time.
Is that for staff, Mr. Counselor Watson? If you don't mind, Mr. Brooks, thank you.
Uh, I, to be honest, I'd have to uh consult a geotechnical engineer. It would be a, a long term. I, I don't think, yeah, I don't think any kind of landscaping treatment would solve this problem or even uh mitigate the resi- the risk in the short term here, so.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Any further questions? Pardon me, Mr. Perrin.
Maybe just to add to Mr. Brooks's comment, if uh Ms. Haman can go back on some of the other slides there. Uh, there is evidence of very large trees that were on the slope that uh are now no longer vertical. So I guess the answer to your question, I'm not a geotechnical engineer, but logic would tell me that when this, you have large trees already there, and the slope is failing with them there, that have a, a very extensive root system. Um, you know, they, they, they get their support from the slope, so uh, they're not going to, you know, stabilize that, that slope to any great deal.
Thanks. Just to confirm also, Mr. Perrin, it does say in the reports, there's a low risk of a slope stability failure in twenty twenty-three. Is that correct? Mr. Brooks?
Uh, the uh twenty twenty-three report from WSP does state that there is a low risk of uh a significant failure in twenty twenty-three. However, they qualify that statement with saying that a thorough review of the entire slope was not done, and any undermining that could be happening in the middle of the slope or the toe of the slope could further contribute to the risk of a significant failure happening at the top of the slope. So, well, I, I guess staff would just reiterate, well, the risk is low in twenty twenty-three. The outcome of that significant failure is severe.
Cute. And, and just a moment here, if you want, the, the outcome is going to be severe, whether it's in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. It's going to be, it's going to be
Absolutely.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Connors, please.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Sandra, I'd like to thank you um for presenting. Um, we were I don't want to say saddled with this, but we were, this was given to us um early in the year, and without knowing the history and without knowing what's gone on in this, on this slope, it was very difficult to um to digest, I guess. So since that time, I've been up to the, the location, I've had a look at it. Uh, not that I'm an engineer by any means, but uh it gives me a better visual of what's going on. Um, I know that going through all your reports that we had a look at, this has been going on since the nineteen seventies. And um retrofit was done in the early eighties with these bin walls, and it's been as good as it can be, I guess, for a matter of forty years or whatever, whatever the timeline is. We've been monitoring again since two thousand seventeen, and you make comments, or comments are made in, in the report, and I just want to clarify here, uh, when you go back to two thousand seventeen, you know, you make comments, or someone made comment in the report that the slope is marginally stable to unstable. And then when we look again in two thousand twenty-three, we say the same thing, marginally stable to unstable. And then we continue on with what the mayor had talked about. There's a low risk, significant slope stability failure will occur in two thousand twenty-three that will jeopardize the proposed works to be carried out in two thousand twenty-four. However, it should be noted that in twenty-three, slope assessment focused only on the top of the slope, and the condition of Front Street, and a full assessment of the entire slope was not completed, as Mr. Brooks said. So your initial comment, or your comment at the end of your presentation was, there's a huge liability risk here. The report contravenes that somewhat, so I'm asking if you can clarify um, your comments at the end and how it relates to the report.
I, I guess it, it comes from, basically, we cannot predict when slope failures will occur here. They could occur next month, they could occur five years from now. We just don't know. I mean, uh, there could be a large storm come up if that slope is saturated. Uh, it could create a lot of sloping there. Um, I noted, there was the comment before about the trees. Trees alter, and vegetation helps stabilize the slope, but unfortunately, over the years, um residents like to have the view of the lake, and a lot of these trees have been cut down uh in order to get a view of the lake. So, so there's human intervention there as well. There's a lot of unpredictability. Um, I mean, the slope could go for another ten years, I don't know it, but it could go tomorrow. So, um I, I don't have a crystal ball. It's just, at, at some point, there, there is a liability there, but we just cannot predict when, when it will be.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing, I'd like to thank you for your time, Sandra, and um we appreciate it.
Thank you.
And if I could get a mover and a seconder for this to be received, uh, Counselor Connors, Counselor Watson, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Connors, seconded by Counselor Watson, that report ICS eight twenty-three regarding the Front Street slope stability report be received for information.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Correspondents? Don't think we have any, or is this the requiring action part? SE four twenty-three, special events application, colors on the beach event. If I could get a mover and a seconder, please. Counselor Morgan, Counselor Halpin, Counselor Bachman.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads that report SE four twenty-three regarding the colors on the beach event be received as information, and that council approve the special events permit for the twenty twenty-three colors on the beach event to be held on July fifteenth, twenty twenty-three from a approximately one o'clock PM to six o'clock PM, subject to the following recommended conditions. The organizers complying with the special events policy as adopted by council, liability insurance being provided by the organizers of the event in the amount of five million dollars, naming the municipality of Central Ogden as co-insured and held harmless. The final schedule and location of the event being approved by the Director of Infrastructure and Community Services, and wayside dining being approved as the food vendor for the event.
Thank you, Ms. Leach. Any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried? SE five twenty-three, special events application, grand opening for Cannondale Nurseries, our friends up the road. Could I get a mover and a seconder, please? Deputy Mayor Noble and Counselor Bachman.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Bachman, that report SE five twenty-three be received for information, and that council approve the special events permit for the grand opening of Cannondale Nursery's limited event to be held from May fifth to seventh, twenty twenty-three, and May twenty-sixth to twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, between eight o'clock AM and six o'clock PM, subject to the following recommended conditions. The organizers complying with the special events policy as adopted by council, liability insurance being provided by the organizers of the event in the amount of five million dollars, naming the municipality of Central Ogden as co-insured and held harmless. The final schedule and location of the event being approved by the Director of Infrastructure and Community Services, council approval of refreshment vehicles for the event as per bylaw two seven one one, section two exemptions, and the refreshment vehicles being inspected by the Director of Fire Services.
Any discussion, council? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Number three, County of Elgin, Central Elgin Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee appointments. Could I get a mover and a seconder? Counselor Connors? Counselor Watson?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Connors, seconded by Counselor Watson, that council approve the appointment of George Corin, Jen Salverda, and Tom Marks to the Elgin-Centraloggin Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee for the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six terms. for the 2023 to 2026 terms.
Any discussion, council? All those in favor? Opposed? Received for information. Elgin County Council Highlights, I hope everyone's had a chance to take a look, and Correspondents from the County of Elgin Regarding Parking on Bridge Street. If I could get a mover and a seconder, please. Deputy Mayor Noble, Councilor Botman.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Councilor Botman, that Correspondence Items Number One and Two be received as information and filed.
Any comments or questions, council, on either of those two items? Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. We're into reports. Central Elgin Planning Office, not deceiving, Chief Administrative Officer, CAO 0723, Port Stanley BIA, Bylaw Amendment Board of Management Composition. If I could get a mover and a seconder? Thank you, Deputy Mayor Noble, and thank you, Council Halpin. Oh, sure, please go ahead, Council Halpin.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Sloan, to Council Graham. I know that you are on the BIA, and I wondered if you could help us to understand what the intention is for changing the numbers on the board.
Thank you, Council Halpin. Council Graham, please.
Recently increased the area of the BIA. And as well, we have found that the amount of work that goes into the different events that we're trying to hold in the coming years, takes a lot more people power than we even had with the six, but besides that, we had two people leave the BIA last year as well, just for voting purposes. So this threefold really, for voting purposes as well, as well, it would be better to have an odd number of people so that there aren't any stalemates that way. But primarily, it's for the people power to help us increase the amount of events that we have throughout the shoulder months to promote and, and bring people into Port Stanley.
Thank you so much.
Anything else, Council Halpin? Any other counselors? Thank you. Ms. Leach?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Councilor Halpin, that council approve an amendment to Bylaw 543 as amended, the BIA Bylaw, to increase the size of the BIA Board of Management from six members appointed by council, one of whom is a member of council, to seven members appointed by council, one of whom is a member of council, and that council approve the appointment of Dustin Allen, Casey Burke, Dan Dale, Ryan Featherstone, Michael Mesha, and Kim Saunders to the Port Stanley BIA Board of Management effective immediately.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Director of Financial Services Treasurer, DFS 0523, request for quotation on waste and recycling dumpster container collection services. If I could first get a mover and a seconder? Deputy Mayor Noble, Councilor Botman. And all the, I'm, I'm going to actually, I think I should please, please read the motion. Thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Councilor Botman, that report DFS 523 regarding the request for quotation, waste and recycling dumpster container collection services be received for information, and that council approve the quotation from Waste Management of Canada Corporation for Waste and Recycling Dumpster Container Collection Services at an annual estimated amount of $57,131.20, plus all applicable taxes for a one-year term contract beginning April 1st, 2023, and ending March 1st, 2024, with four one-year options to renew for a total contract value of $285,656, plus all applicable taxes.
Thank you. Discussion questions from council, please. Council Halpin. Oh, pardon me, Council Graham.
So if we could just have someone speak to this, because I'm just trying to understand, we're farming out, or we're looking for tenders to farm out? This portion of the, of the waste collection, is that correct, Mr. Brooks?
Mr. Brooks, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the municipality has large dumpsters, dumpsters at various facilities throughout the municipality, including the Port Stanley Arena, the Belmont Arena, White Station Operation Center, and the beach. So these collect, you know, the waste that's found on the roadside, as well as the beach cleanings from the beach, waste at the arenas, garbage that's collected on the beach, go to these dumpsters. So quotes were sought here, and we expect that in 2023 with waste management, it would cost the municipality approximately $57,000 per year. Previously, under our old agreement, we were paying roughly $77,000. So we expect to save approximately $25,000 per year on this new agreement.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brooks. Council Graham?
And sorry, who's doing that currently?
Mr. Brooks, please.
The current contractor is Waste Connections.
Thank you. Council Graham?
That's fine. Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Oh, pardon me. Deputy Mayor Noble?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Is that a five-year contract? Typically, Waste Connections is, they look at like a five-year, just curious.
I don't recall what the last agreement was for with Waste Connections. All I can tell you is here we have an option for three here with waste management.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Any other questions or comments, council? Council Watson?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. Going forward, we're not going to be picking up recycling. Is that correct? And what are we going to do with that guy that was doing that on our payroll? And could we fit him in? Keep him going forward if they have to maybe pick up some of these bags themselves. I'm, I'm just trying to save a job here.
Thank you, Council Watson. A couple of things before I pass it to Mr. Brooks. This is for the actual dumpster. Is that correct?
This is to supply the dumpster and have the truck come and collect the contents of the dumpster.
Thank you. Council Watson, follow up or happy to hear your question?
It would be cost prohibitive then for us to lease a dumpster truck and do it ourselves, like, because are we not going to have a surplus of employees in the garbage going forward?
Mr. Brooks, please.
It, it wouldn't make sense to lease a truck and purchase dumpsters. In this case, to save money, it would end up costing the municipality more money. When the garbage does transition, currently, the way it works right now is we have two full-time solid waste operators. That is offset right now through help through the Roads Department. So we actually won't be losing any employees when that transition happens. We just won't need the additional help from the Roads Department. They'll be able to be deployed and help out in other areas.
Thank you. Any other questions for this particular item? Then I think we've had the motion read. Do you want to, if we could have a vote, please? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much. Director of Fire Services, F30323, Monthly Alarm Activities Report. If I could get a mover and a seconder, please. Deputy Mayor Noble, Council Halpin.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Councilor Halpin, that report FS 323 regarding the monthly alarm activities report for February 2023 be received for information.
Hey, council, have any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Director of Asset Management Development Services, we have an application for exemption to the noise bylaw as amended. If I could have a mover and a seconder, please. Council Botman, Deputy Mayor Noble?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Councilor Botman, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that report AMDS 823 regarding the application for exemption to the noise bylaw 212 as amended be received as information, and that council grant an exemption to Bylaw Number 212, being a bylaw to control noise in the municipality of Central Ogan as amended, to allow the St. Thomas Gun Club to hold their spring/summer trap shooting events taking place on May 21st, 2023, July 9th, 2023, and August 6th, 2023.
Questions or comments from council? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. February Building Report, AMDS 1023. If I could have a mover and a seconder, please. Council Halpin and Deputy Mayor Noble.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Councilor Halpin, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that report AMDS 1023 regarding the February 2023 Monthly Building Report be received for information.
Folks, anyone, council, have any questions about the building report? Any concerns, Mr. Perrin, versus last year? Are we, we're still in good stead?
No concerns, Mr. Mayor. The, when you look at 2022, excuse me, compared to 2023, there is a substantial difference in permit value, but as the note at the bottom indicates, in 2022, the major permit was for the multi-unit building at Kokomo, and that's $25 million. So when you take that off, we're virtually consistent with previous years.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor? Opposed? And carried. AMDS 1123, February 23rd Monthly Bylaw Report. If I could get a mover and a seconder? Counselors, yes, Counselor, sorry. Pardon me. Counselor Connors, Counselor Halpin.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Councilor Connors, seconded by Councilor Halpin, that report AMDS 1123 regarding the February 2023 Monthly Bylaw Report be received for information.
Questions or comments from council? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Now we're into the bylaws. Do we do this as a whole, or do we do them individually? Ms. Leach?
So we'll do a first and second reading of all of them together.
Thank you, Ms. Leach. If I could have a mover and a seconder, please. Deputy Mayor Noble and Councilor Connors.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Councilor Connors, that Bylaw 2773, 2774, 2775, 2000, 2777, and 2778 be read a first and second time.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. And I, I need a mover and a seconder for that, correct? Thank you, Ms. Leach. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. If I could get another mover and a seconder, please. Thank you, Council Halpin and Council Connors.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Councilor Halpin, seconded by Councilor Connors, that Bylaw 2773, 2774, 2775, 2777, and 2778 be read a third time and finally passed.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Very good. Other business, folks, 2023 budget dates. So a couple of comments were, were coming here. I think it was for the end of March, we were going to have the final numbers. Is that right? Can I ask, Archana, are you there? It's just wanted to know what the status was. Thank you.
So the projected numbers will be available mid-April. Not mid-March, sir.
Okay. And, and then the final numbers, when we're, when we, when are you planning on having those, please?
That would be second week of May to the council. So we are right in the middle of closing the year.
Okay. Questions, counselors, on timing, next steps, please? I'd like to hear your input, please. Council Botman, please. Thank you.
Moving forward on the, on the budget, I, I think is a necessary step. Whether or not we have the final numbers, I think we have numbers pretty close to the end of the year. And in all honesty, we have projects that are waiting to be finalized and tendered to move our Central Ogan projects forward. Waiting, I, I don't see it benefiting us. We're talking about middle of April, first of May. Now we're into half a year gone with no projects. And in all honesty, I have to, as every counselor does, answer to their ward constituents. And having said what we've done, and at this point, we haven't approved anything to say we've done anything. I think we need to move on this, the budget, get it moving so that we can actually get our projects and our Central Ogan pro, once again, projects underway and to get it started.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Council Botman. Other counselors, please? Council Halpin, please.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Sloan. Only that I'd like to second that, that I've had people that have been hopeful that I would be able to give them answers on the projects they take interest in since December, and that's not a reality. And the last time that I spoke with staff about this, though I'm sure they could update us, I believe we had fourteen projects that we need to send out bids for right now that we haven't done yet. So, I mean, we are losing time.
Thank you very much, Council Halpin. Anyone else? Council Graham, please.
I would say that I'm not comfortable moving forward with the budget until we at least have projected numbers for our final year end. I think we need those to be able to move forward and do and look at our, our 2023 budget.
Thank you. Any other counselors wish to comment? Council Connors, after which Council Halpin, please.
I also support moving forward with the budget, but what I find a little confusing is we have a list of fourteen jobs or fourteen jobs we're going to tender out. I think that we should probably discuss those fourteen, if the list is fourteen, before we look at tendering anything. I seen so far quite a bit of work going towards the Port Stanley area, which I understand why. But again, we, I mean, there should be something in each ward, but I'd like to see what that list looks like.
Thank you, Council Connors, and I take your point. Council Halpin, please.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Sloan. My understanding is that it would in fact be the budget deliberations that would allow us to discuss those projects so that we could move forward, which is one of the reasons that I do think that it's time that we do it. And I'd like to note, too, that I mean, Archana won a national award last year for our budget, and it's millions of dollars and came in at, I think, less than a thousand dollars difference at the end. So I think that it would be reasonable of us to trust the projections that we have at this point, rather than to be constantly stopping the progress of our municipality to get something more exact.
Appreciate your comments, Council Halpin. I, I wonder if we could have maybe a happy median for those of us that would like to see final numbers or projections versus those who would like to keep moving. Is there anyone that would like to consider possibility of a date? And Council Botman makes a good point about to continue the discussion as opposed to it being a final issue. Is that fair to say, Council Botman, that keeping the train on the tracks is sort of the next step?
I'm sure. I'm, I'm looking at setting a date and getting us into deliberations on the budget. That's exactly what I'm looking for. Waiting for the ultimate final numbers when we've got, I'm going to say ninety percent of the numbers in already, and we're just waiting for the final stamp is, is really, I don't see it stopping us. We have, you know, very capable people that can make those projections and keep us within a certain amount on, on their projections moving forward. To stop a project's waiting for a simple stamp to say this is our final year end, I don't see that as, as being for, for productive.
Thank you, Council Botman. I understand. Council Halpin, please.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Sloan. I'm just not sure if I understood your question, Mr. Mayor, but are we agreeing that you'd like us to book a meeting, but you're not absolutely requiring that we have a final vote within that meeting? Is that sort of what you were asking and what we're looking for here?
Just that it would be continued. I, I think that the comment was made that we would continue these discussions, and I'm happy to do that. I was just going to mention a potential date or ask whether or not the, the council, is that okay? You go ahead, Council Botman.
Definitely, let's set a date and let's get this thing moving.
Thank you, would council consider April the fifth? And I'm happy to take other suggestions if that doesn't work with people's calendars.
Yeah, I'm fine with April fifth or sixth, whichever, whichever is fine.
Thank you, Counselor Bachman, Counselor Halpin. Counselor Noble, oh, Deputy Mayor Noble's okay. Counselor Connors. Counselor Watson. Counselor Graham, please. Oh, I'm getting a thumbs up, thank you, okay, we have a date, April the fifth. What would be a convenience, pardon me, Ms. Wilson, please? Thank you. Is there, is, is there a conflict, if there is, we can, we can discuss?
No, I was just gonna ask for staff clarity on the time.
Perhaps we could meet at, is, is it good for everyone to consider early afternoon or ten o'clock in the morning, which would counselors prefer? Thank. Is ten AM like last time, good with, with, with the group? Perfect, Counselor Connors is offering to get lunch, I'm just, pardon me. Look forward to that on the tenth, so we have a date, thank you.
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
Please, Ms., Archana, please go ahead.
Yes, so thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. What I would like to understand is what are we trying to accomplish during that meeting? And if there are any questions, if anybody can send us that in advance so that we can be prepared and also provide whatever is required.
Perfect, I'll send an email out to council after this in advance of the fifth, and we can give further clarity at that point, is that okay?
Absolutely, and my whole thing is that we were, last time when we were in the January sixteenth session, we provided a detailed report and all the questions and answer. So I would like to have that done in advance of the meeting as a, as it is a reactive, you know, report.
Noted, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none? Thank you. Counselor Connors, please.
Through you, Mayor. Counselor Halpin, during the discussions of this, this meeting, we will decide, you've alluded to it already, so we decide basically where we're going, what projects we're gonna move forward with, we have an open discussion about that.
Counselor Halpin, please.
Thank you through you, Mayor Sloan, I'm also new at this, and I hope that staff will correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that by approving the budget, we approve the projects within the budget, and so we need to actually go through the budget, and if we're looking to save money, for example, decide what projects are going to go forward and what, what will not.
Thank you, Counselor Halpin, does that clarify for you, Counselor Connors? Thank you, thank you. Counselor Graham, is there anything from your side? Can't really.
No, just if we could have a list of those fourteen items that Counselor Halpin is talking about.
Thank you, we'll put that on the list for, follow-up for budget day, the fourteen items. Thank you. And now we need a motion to move into closed session? If I could get a mover and a second, please, Counselor Halpin, Counselor Connors.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Connors, that council proceed into closed session at eight thirteen PM in order to address a matter pertaining to advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, a position, plan, procedure, or criteria, or instruction to be, to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on, or on behalf of the municipality or local board, the security of the property of the municipality or local board, information explicitly supplied in confidence to the municipality or local board by Canada, a province, or territory, or a crown agency of any of them, and personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees. Session and return to open session at ten thirty-four PM.
Opposed? Carried. Item number one, can I get a mover in a second, please? Counselor Connor, Deputy Mayor Noble.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Connors, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that closed session item CS two regarding Front Street Slope Stabilization be received for information, and that staff proceed as directed by council.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Can I get a mover in a second for CS three, Earth Corporation? Deputy Mayor Noble, Counselor Connors.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Connors, that closed session item CS three regarding the Earth Corporation be received for information, and that staff proceed as directed by council, and further that council approve the appointment of Mayor Sloan as the designated representative for the meeting of casting votes at the Earth Corporation Special Shareholder Meeting dated Thursday, March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, being held at the Elmhurst Inn and Spa Angers Hall.
CS four, shared services been deferred, do I need a mover in a second to defer it, Diane?
Procedurally, Mayor Sloan, you gave that direction in closed session, so Ms. Leach will be reading the motion that says that you're going to file it now?
Sorry, Counselor Bachman, go ahead, please.
Did we not discuss moving forward with shared services? On this directing, was that not the discussion we had, or?
No, this is the one on the, on this.
Okay, never mind.
Sorry, Counselor Bachman, but we, we didn't, we, okay, sorry, we didn't write, Diane. Are we at mover and second or stage? Okay. I need a mover in a second, pardon me, Deputy Mayor Noble, Deputy, or Counselor.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Connors, that closed session item CS four regarding shared services be received for information and filed.
CS five, economic development, mover in a second, please, Deputy Mayor Noble, Counselor Watson.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Watson, that closed session item CS five regarding economic development be received for information, and that staff proceed as directed by council.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. CS six, can I get a mover in a second? Counselor Connors and Deputy Mayor Noble.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Connors, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that closed session item CS six regarding active transportation fund be received for information, and that staff proceed as directed by council.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. And if I get a mover in a second for number seven? Deputy Mayor Noble, Counselor Watson.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Watson, that closed session item CS seven regarding the verbal report from the mayor be received for information. And that council direct Tim Dobie Consulting to assist Limited to assist with the process of seeking applicants for the position of interim CAO for the municipality of Central Elgin, and further that Mr. Dobie be directed to consult with Anushka Vandenbosch, Manager of Human Resources and Health and Safety, as well as Beth Trainer, Employment Lawyer for the municipality of Central Elgin, and report back to council with possible candidates.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Confirmation bylaw, if I get a mover in a second, please, Counselor Connor, Counselor Bachman, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Connors, seconded by Counselor Bachman, that bylaw two seven seven six be read a first and second time.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried, need another mover in a second. Deputy Mayor Noble, Counselor Watson.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Watson, that bylaw two seven seven six be read a third time and finally passed.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. And if I could have a motion for adjournment, Counselor Bachman, second or Counselor Connors?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Bachman, seconded by Counselor Connors, that the regular meeting of council dated Monday, March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three be adjourned at ten forty PM, and that the next regular meeting of council be scheduled for Monday, March twenty-third at seven o'clock PM.
All those in favor? Opposed, adjourned, thank you, everyone.